Afternoon, everyone. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our right to govern.
Pardonnations under God, indivisible, over liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Follow us meeting the order. Entertainer motion for the reading and approval of amendments to last meeting.
Motion.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
Turn your mic on.
Turn your microphone.
There you go. Agenda items only. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
I'm talking on your budget. We taxpayers have already paid for consolidating the majority of the most frequently publicly used departments into one building. Now, you have spent $5 million to buy another building without a publicly available study showing the need for more space. I guess now we will have to further grow government to fill the building. Personally, this taxpayer would prefer you find ways to shrink the size of government. Now, I know only one of the three of you live in Scranton, so you apparently don't give a hoot that the city of Scranton has now lost another valuable taxable property. I would like to know where the study is that shows that Geisinger, Regional, Moses Taylor, Wright Center, et cetera, are not sufficient. Also, how do you justify your desire to compete with these existing medical clinics? Would really like to know the answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Ordinances, second reading. Ordinance 230305.
This is ordinance number 288, second reading from Lackawanna County. An ordinance of Lackawanna County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the tax rate enacted in the budget for the year 2024. And appropriate specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the county government herein after set for during the current fiscal year, be it ordained and enacted. And is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania. Section 1, that a tax be and the same is given by law, be it an old property within the said county subject, is taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2024 as follows. Tax rate for general county purposes, the sum of 49.36 mils on each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum of 493.5 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For debt purposes, the sum of 14.24 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of 142.4 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the Scranton, the county library system, the sum of 3.07 mils on each dollar assessed valuation, the sum of 30.70 cents on each $100 of value. For the purposes of the cultural education fund, the sum of 1.0 mils, or the sum of 10 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. Total mileage for all purposes is the sum of 67.66 mils. Section 2, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are repealed. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Entertainer motion to approve the second reading.
Motion.
Second. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Closed?
No.
No? Okay. Ordinance, second reading, 230306.
Ordinance 289, authorizing the issuance of tax and revenue anticipation note series 2024 in the principal amount of $15 million, whereas the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania anticipates receiving taxes and other revenues during the fiscal year ending December 31st, which taxes and other revenues are currently uncollected. And whereas, the county has determined to borrow monies for the purpose of funding, in part such cumulative cash flow deficit by issuing a note to repay for the anticipated taxes in accordance with the Local Government Unit Debt Act. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners for reasons and purposes recited above, the county hereby exercises its power and authority to borrow money and authorizes the issuance and sale of the tax and revenue anticipation note series 2024 in the amount of $15 million in anticipation of the receipt of current taxes and revenues during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. The note, when issued, will be a general obligation of the county. The note shall upon issuance thereof be equally irrationably secured by a pledge of security in and lien and charge on the taxes and other revenues to be received by the county during the period when the note is outstanding. The chairman or any other commissioner of the board, the chief of, the assistant chief of staff of the county, and all other proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, education delivery, and the sale of the note. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon approval. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Entertainer motion to approve.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Ordinance 230307.
This is ordinance 290, an ordinance of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania adopting the Lackawanna County Reassessment Relief Initiative, whereas Lackawanna County poses an annual real estate tax on assessed value of real property located within the county. Whereas, on May 18th, 2022, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners approved a countywide revision of assessment to reassess the property values of all real property located in Lackawanna County. Whereas, on January 1st, 2026, the new assessed value in all real property taxation of Lackawanna County shall be implemented. And the purpose of the Reassessment Relief Initiative is to allow eligible residents to be relieved of any immediate financial burden caused by the increase of their county real estate taxes only following reassessment. Now therefore be it enacted or ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania as follows. Section 1, Reassessment Relief Initiative. The Reassessment Relief Initiative will be available to eligible residents commencing the year that the tax bills are issued reflecting the newly reassessed property values. The Reassessment Relief Initiative program will sunset effective January 1st of the year, immediately preceding the year that the tax bills are initially issued reflecting the newly reassessed property values. The RRI is also a program offered to eligible residents in Lackawanna County who have experienced a net increase of not less than 20% in the county real estate tax following reassessment. The Reassessment Initiative applies to the increased portion of the county taxes only as a result of reassessment, does not apply to increased property taxes due and owing to any other taxing district. The Lackawanna County Office of Assessment and Appeals, in conjunction with the Neighbor Works Northeast of Pennsylvania, may grant an application for a Reassessment Relief Initiative. Applicants must apply for relief under the Reassessment Relief Initiative Honor before April 1st of this year, of the year that the tax bills are issued reflecting the newly reassessed property values. To be eligible for the Reassessment Relief Initiative, the following eligibility requirements must be met. Only deeded owners may apply for relief. All deeded owners must be applicants listed on the application and sign the same. The property shall be exclusively to the primary single-family residential dwelling of the deeded owners. The property shall be owner-occupied. Occupants permitted besides the applicants are members of the applicant's family. Any use of the property in whole or in business for rent, for business or rent, will make the property ineligible for relief. The applicant shall not own any other residential or commercial properties located in Lackawanna County. The single-family owner-occupied residential property for which relief is sought must be the one and only residence of the applicant. Total gross annual household income for the single-deeded owner and all adults occupying the residence for which relief is sought shall not exceed $35,000. Total gross annual household income for joint or multi-deeded owners and all adults occupying the residence for which relief is sought shall not exceed $45,000. There shall be no real estate tax delinquencies owed by any of the applicants at the time of the application. The property shall be insured, and there shall be at least 20% net tax increase in the amount of the Lackawanna County real estate tax owed on the property owned by the applicant following reassessment. Applicants must submit the filing documentation as part of their application. A copy of the current deed for the property owned by the applicant, a copy of the mortgage for the property, a certificate of the owner's insurance, or current homeowner's insurance declaration page, a copy of a valid driver's license, state identification card, real ID, passport, or birth certificate for every adult residing at the property. A copy of the deeded owner's most current federal tax return if one was filed, Pennsylvania income tax return if one was filed, as well as any social security verification letter, social security retirement, social security disability, supplemental social security income, state supplemental payment, pension income statement, and/or other proof of income. If an applicant's deceased spouse is listed on the deed to the property, a copy of the deceased spouse's certificate of death, and if the applicant have a last will and testament, a copy of that document. Once approved for the Reassessment Relief Initiative, the following terms will apply. No penalties and/or interest will be assessed on the increased amount of county taxes until January 31st, 2028. If the tax amount for which relief was granted under this program is not paid in full on or before January 31st, 2028, penalties and interest will be charged commencing on February 1st, 2028. The interest rate per annum for each calendar year shall be the rate established by subsection 306 of the Real Estate Tax Sales Law, which is currently set at 9% per annum. The 10% penalty will also be reinstated. If the tax amount for which relief was granted under this program is not paid in full on or before July 1st, 2028, the property may be subject to sale in accordance with the Real Estate Tax Sale Law.
Okay. We still got three sections here. Hold on.
Applicants are not relieved from their obligation to pay the amount of the county taxes due and owing, which is not effectuated by the participation in this program. In an effort to work towards long-term financial stability for applicant participants in the Reassessment Relief Initiative, will have access to free financial counseling from Neighbor Works Northeast of Pennsylvania throughout the term of the program for which the applicants are eligible. This ordinance shall not apply to real estate taxes other than those assessed by Lackawanna County, and more particularly only applies to the difference between the pre-assessment and the post-reassessment county real estate tax liability due on any eligible property that is equal to or greater than 20% of the pre-assessment tax liability due on the property. If any section clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance shall be held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decisions shall not affect any other section clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance, so long as it remains legally enforceable minus the invalid portion. The county reserves the right to amend this ordinance or any portion thereof from time to time, as it shall deem advisable in the best interest of the promotion of the purposes and intent of this ordinance and the effective administration thereof. This ordinance shall take effect 10 days following its enactment. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. That was a one reading.
Read that again, Brian.
Please. Entertainer motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda, one at Scranton. I spent quite some time checking the October 16th version of your proposed budget against the November 21st, and I saw many, many light items that had been changed, and there's not enough time to address those light items. So, I want to make some, an overall comment and a recommendation. I saw in the paper that since 2016, the county's budget increased 61%, but its tax rate only went up 17.6%, which tells me that the county has been spending more money than it takes in as revenues. Now, we all know how finances work. Your expenses will go up every year. Your utilities, your healthcare, transportation, taxes, everything goes up, okay? And if you do not have a counterbalancing increase in revenue in your own income, you're going to be in debt quite soon. You're going to be in the hole. And I think what you need to do, now that you have run out of one-time revenue sources, you need to start thinking in terms of five-year plans, not just a one-year budget, which is not to say you need to give us a five-year budget, but you need to be able to explain to us how you're going to, how the budget you propose each year is going to fit into a five-year plan, so that after five years, you have no structural deficit. You have no major shortfalls. You have covered all the essential requirements that county government is supposed to give to its citizens. You may be doing that in your work sessions, but citizens are not privy to it. But starting in next year's budget sessions, as you start presenting this to the public, I would like to see that addressed, okay? Now that you know you have some significant problems with the county budget in terms of a structural deficit, no more one-time revenues, and other issues that you have, look at how high healthcare went up this year. You can forecast that going forward. You know your new contracts are going to be coming up for renewal. So I strongly encourage you to do that, because you cannot plan year by year, even though you may only have a four-year term. This is the way you have to approach finances. Not a short-term perspective, but a long-term one, in which your annual budget fits nicely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher, Scranton. I would like to know if there are studies showing why the county has to get into the medical clinic, and also where we are deficient in Lackawanna County, that you are needed to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioner.
Sorry to see you guys. Commissioner Chermak's the only one coming back. So, to the new people, Mr. McGloin is here. Happy to see him attend the meeting. Wish him luck. And Boris is here, that's good. We have some media here telling about this. Last time I was here, the media didn't care that there was loans being taken out and we're growing government. I don't agree with any of it. I don't think we need a medical clinic. I saw some of the meetings, and increases in expenditures are what's causing all the problems. If you hire more people, not only do you have salary increases, but you have pension increases, you have expenditures for the building. I was over at the building. It's completely being, completely renovated. I know when this building was being renovated, we did a whole entire series of what we were doing and the costs. I didn't see anybody over there with cameras yet, so I'm wondering where they are. So maybe Boris could take a tour of the building and show everybody exactly what's happening over there, because it's completely ripped apart and being redone. I watched their meetings. We are on the, we are on the cusp of bringing in more people, more expenditures, and we have to pay for that at the county level. The state isn't taking any money in yet. We're not approved. So, I know that we had a negative budget. I'm looking for it. I just got a copy of the new one, because the last one wasn't updated yet. But I'll be back again. And to the new commissioners, you don't have to accept this budget. You can reopen it and not give us a tax increase or not keep the budget that they have, unlike when the three came up here and gave us a tax increase, the first thing they did when they reopened it. So, maybe you can look at that and see what you can do in your transition meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Commissioners, other business?
Commissioner Chermak? Nope, nothing.
Commissioner Dominic?
I would, I would like Dave to speak on a couple issues. Dave Bolzoni? I can call you to the stand.
You can.
Dave, you and I spoke several times, but we spoke just prior to this meeting on some things that I, I wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly. Can you explain to us? I don't read the Times often. Can't imagine why, but I don't. But I did happen to stumble upon an article about a surplus and why we don't use the surplus and things of that nature, and I want you to talk, talk to us about that. And I also want you to address the comments that were just made by Commissioner Cummings regarding eliminating the tax increase. Why do you feel that this tax increase is needed? And also, I want you to talk about how we got here. Is this a systemic issue? Is this something that this administration is solely responsible for? How did we get here and how do we get out? Can you talk about that? And I think it would also be very eye-opening for our new commissioner coming in, Mr. McGloin.
And I have how much time?
Three minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. I'm going to read something that I prepared relative to the discussion on surplus and fund balance. I hope not to put everyone to sleep, but when you're looking at a surplus, it's a current-year measure of the difference between revenues and expenditures. Your fund balance is the cumulative result of the ongoing measure of those adjustments in revenues and expenditures. One is current year, the other is based on a compilation of year-over-year activity. We do not have surplus. Reviewing the activity for 2022 using internal reports, since our audit report is not yet completed, expenses exceeded revenues by 15.8 million. That result does not factor in an unaudited fund balance, again, from internal reports of 19.87 million. It also does not factor in the approximately 12.6 million in payables that we carried over from 2022 into 2023, since we were holding payments in the last quarter of last year because we did not have sufficient funds in order to pay the bills. That's a recorded figure that's likely higher. Now, fund balance. A fund balance consists of two parts, a reserved and unreserved fund balance. The reserved fund balance is not available for discretionary use. Funds use is restricted only to whatever the intended use is. The unreserved balance is the portion that the county has consistently used more recently to avoid tax increases and meet other payables requirements. Within those two categories are five fund balance components. In the reserved category, the fund balance consists of non-spendable or restricted funds. Those funds cannot be used to offset operating deficiencies or general operating purposes. In the unreserved category are committed, assigned, and unassigned balances. The committed fund balance has formal constraints for use placed on those funds by the governing body. Their use would be only as intended by the direction of the governing body. Assigned funds are surplus funds, which are categorized as special revenues, set aside by the board, which has constraints placed upon their use without formal action. The unassigned category represents the surplus or deficit remaining in the unreserved fund balance that is either not committed or assigned for specific purposes and may be used for general payables or to offset deficits. Even if the fund balance identified in the internal reports is transposed to the audit report without any adjustment, it does not represent the amount of funds that are available in entirety to cover any deficiencies, since it incorporates those five fund balance components. The estimated fund balance that we used in the budget really is just that. It's an estimate, it's an estimate based on data that really is over a year old. So the 20.3 million, 03 million identified in the budget is not representative of current fund balance, and also includes those funds that are subject to constraint, those five different components. So for anyone thinking that the county has 20.03 million in the bank to use to offset the preliminary budget deficit, it's a fantasy. The county finished 2022 with 7.128 million in cash in the bank in the general fund account. The balance was mostly, if not entirely, unassigned. On January 4th, 2023, an accounts payable aging, invoice aging report indicated a grand total of payables due of 12.619 million, which does not reflect all of the payables that were carried over into 2023, since not all of those items were not yet entered into the system. So, what I suggest is just do the math. That's where the structural issue is. It's part of the reason why we're taking out a $15 million tax anticipation note. It's not just a cash flow issue. We're trying to cover payables that are being carried over from one year into the next. So there is a systemic issue that needs to be addressed. This budget does not necessarily solve the problem. This budget takes us from one year into the next. It's the beginning of a solution, but as was pointed out, one-time revenue sources are not the solution. I pointed out in my narrative for this year, my narrative for last year, one-time revenue sources have a compounding effect. So if we looked at the budget, preliminary budget deficit in 2022 was 4 million. We closed that gap with one-time revenues. In 2023, it was 8 million, and, and we closed that gap with one-time revenues. And, and I'm not saying it wasn't justified. Consider the pandemic, consider inflation, so we acted accordingly. But the budget deficit, the preliminary deficit that we faced in 2020, for 2024, was 15 million. So again, look at the compounding effect and do the math. So if we're using one-time revenue sources in order to cover the budget deficit, I would expect, and I hope not, but I would expect we'd be having the same discussion next year at some point. So, it's a cautionary note, and again, I hope I didn't bore anyone. I thought this was an opportunity to maybe expand upon the subject a little bit.
So, in layman's terms, I know everything that you just said, and I read your memo, and we talked about it. The surplus is not a surplus per se, because our expenses still exceed our revenue.
Correct.
On a recurring basis.
That's correct.
Okay.
And David, these bills that are pushed into the next year, this has been going on for approximately eight to nine years?
Well, I could speak mainly through my tenure.
Right.
And I was surprised at, not the fact that payables don't get carried over. I mean, if your budget is pretty tight, you're going to get to year-end where you're going to have some deficiencies, and you're going to wind up carrying payables. I was surprised at the volume that was getting carried over. And again, it is somewhat concerning that almost all of the tax anticipation note is being used in order to cover prior-year payables. It's hard to budget that number. So normally, you want to try and budget for the expenditure of prior-year payables in your current-year budget. Difficult to budget $12 million to cover prior-year payables. So, you know, there are certainly some issues that I think have to be addressed. I think being aware of them is certainly a step in the right direction, and, you know, hopefully we can look at some resolution going forward.
Thank you.
I just think, if I can just say, like, I really struggled with this increase. I think it's a systemic issue of many administrations not making the cuts that are necessary, and I, I really, I have a lot of compassion for next year's, the next term, Commissioner Chermak, soon to be Commissioner McGloin, and Commissioner gone, because there are so many issues in this county. I mean, I've talked about it before, we have such a disparity in income. It's a huge disparity. Some people making a lot, you know, more money than they, not more money than they should, but just on a higher end of a salary scale, and then others who, who are making far less, but you're dealing with unions, and seven of them. So how do you clean up that disparity? And then I see people make comments that freeze hiring, and don't do this, or don't have a salary board, or don't do that. But the problem is, you can't just freeze government. Times are, the world is still moving. We, you know, COVID still is lingering out there. An opioid epidemic is still crushing us. People are, I know two people who recently died from opioid epidemics in the last weekend. and a half. So there are certain departments, I believe, that have resources probably more than they need. I believe that sometimes you don't know what you can do with less until you're given less. And then there are some departments that are extremely under-resourced that could lead to liability against the county if not addressed. But I really did struggle with this. The reason why I, I declined to vote in, in favor of the first tax increase when we first took office in 2020, because we had just been in office for three weeks, and I needed time to look at everything. And I really have preached about cutting expenses in certain departments, and really, I mean, going through, at the end of 21, go for 2022 budget, I went through, and I'm not an accountant, and I, I, Brian Jeffers can attest to this, I, I came up with $1.5 million in expenses to cut, and I had a second vote for 1.2. So I did put my, my money where my mouth is, for lack of better saying, but it's hard to do that, and it's not the most pleasurable thing to do when you're in our seats. And even the people who are the most informed, people like Joan, you're very informed on the issues. Until you're in this job, you really don't know the day-to-day and everything that it And, you know, cutting budgets, it's easy to say, but then people lose jobs, and you can't slice somebody's budget in half. You have to do it gradually. And then, like I said, things come up where things need to be fixed, or jobs need to be created to address a certain issue that's occurring in the world, and it's just a very difficult position for us to be in. And I hope moving forward, the new administration, including Commissioner Chermack, who's always been very vocal about cutting expenses as well, will continue to do so. And I, I feel for the position that the new Commissioners are going to be in to try to bring this county out of the hole that has been, it has been put in over many years. Does anybody have any questions about the reassessment deferment? My reassessment, calm down. My reassessment deferment, does anybody have any questions on that? I'll time, LaMia. All right, that's all I have to say.
The reassessment will address many of these problems. It's something that's long overdue, it's over 55 years. We're the second or third-last county in the Commonwealth to do it. It's something that should have been done many, many years ago. A lot of problems have been, been collected, and I think we did the right thing to get started in the right direction. On that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute, I wanted to discuss the, I wanted to talk about the Board of Health building. Did you want to talk about that or no?
No.
We, we didn't, the million, the, the building was $5 million, did we, correct? Did we, did, did we use the general fund proceeds to, how, how was that building paid for?
Four million from the state, one million from our.
Okay. And does anybody want to speak on why we think the Board of Health is important? No? Okay.
You're out of order.
I'm out of order.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Not the first time I heard that.
Second.
I have a question. All in favor? Aye.
Thanks for watching ECTV. Please follow us on Facebook and subscribe to our YouTube channel.